In this in advance, make sure that Spaulding does their portion.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Here and now, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
No motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the planning and zoning. Kenta?
Good morning Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. This item before you is a request to change the Unified Land Development Code and how it regulates front yard fences with case number ULDC-am-2401. Chapter seven, section 70204 of the ULDC provides the code for fences. Current code would permit a front yard fence with approval from the Architecture Review Committee. A property zoned RA or outside of a subdivision can request this front yard fence. The Architecture Review Committee is an internal review committee of representatives from the Building Department, Planning and Zoning, and DOT, though in instances, other departments may be invited to the committee, for example SPOST, if there is a potential road widening for that lot. The request before you would be to allow a front yard fence for properties within subdivisions, provided that they meet specific provisions. Number one, fence must be decorative in nature, not allowing for a chain link fence, for example. Justification or hardship is provided with the request. Property does not gain access from a platted internal subdivision street, which is the key difference here, as well as the request to be reviewed and approved by the Architecture Review Committee. This slide before you shows the Spivey-Chase subdivision, all of which is zoned R1. None of, as with the current code, none of these lots would be permitted a front yard fence. However, this request is to allow, again, front yard fence requests to be made for properties that do not gain access from the internal subdivision street. So, in instance, that would be those lots outlined in red. These lots, for example, in the instances of Spivey-Chase, take access off of the arterial road as Jodico Road. And again, not an internal subdivision street, so this request would be for lots such as those, even across the street in that subdivision, there are some, you know, some lots that gain access off of Jodico rather than that subdivision street, that this request to change the code could also apply to those lots as well. Staff felt it important to make the distinction between those lots taking access from the internal road and those lots from a heavy traffic road such as Jodico Road. Oftentimes, we do receive front yard fence requests as a result of safety concerns from the property owner. Viewing these properties from the street, you really wouldn't be able to tell that they're located in a subdivision. On March 14th, 2024, the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the applicant's request to amend section 70204 of the ULDC. They went along with staff recommendation. However, since then, we did have some comments from public safety, mostly in regards to visibility. And with that, planning staff did modify our recommendation.
Yes, I do have some questions. And so you, the front yard would be four feet. I thought that from the public safety side, it was more of being able to see, have visual through the fence.
That is correct. We, that's in part why we reduced that height down, from six feet down to four feet.
Well, to me, visual would be being able to see through the cracks in the fence, not necessarily the height of the fence.
Okay, understood. With front yard fence requests, and really just any fence requests, the main reason is for privacy. We did still want to provide that possibility of allowing privacy. Certainly, if it's the pleasure of the board to make the, rather to change the code to only allow four see-through fences, that is certainly within your right.
Well, I mean, what if they wanted a six-foot fence for height purposes? You know, I guess, what my, I guess, concern would be is that if, long as public safety, if they make it a see-through fence, say like if it's a wrought iron fence across the front, then long as public safety can see through it, then would they have an option of making it a six-foot fence? Would you give them that option? In other words, I'm saying you got four feet, but can we add, Sherri, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Where they could have an option depending on if the fence gives visibility for public safety.
Okay.
So I think you can tell what we all were recommending is for, what I think I heard the chair saying is allow that flexibility. So maybe if the board approves it, you can enter language similar to no less than four and no greater than six. And so that gives them between four, five, and six as approved by staff.
Architecture, yep.
And I think that would address your question, Chair.
And I think maybe even to add further, if it is a six-foot tall fence, we add that see-through.
That it has to be, it has to be, it has to be complete visibility for public safety.
Okay.
And then the other question that I had is that will each of these come back before the board, each fence, or is this something that the department, the review department, will make a decision that the fence goes up? Does that still, does this still comes back before the board?
It would not come before the board. It would come to the Architecture Review Committee made up of those representatives from the departments.
So what concern that I would have is that, how do we make the district commissioners aware of fences that are going into areas that they may get complaints from their constituents? So how will commissioners be notified of, I mean, because there's a fence right now that's on, what is that, flip, not flipping, but is that flipping?
It's flipping.
It's the most ugliest fence I've ever seen. And it does not fit the character of that community there. And so how can we be, I mean, even though you all would review it, but we're the one that gets the phone calls, not you all.
So I think one of the reasons for creating this policy is because of situations that you've just provided where there are no regulations, I'm assuming, I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with the one on Flippin Road. Right now, the way that the ordinance is written is that it would go to staff for review. If the applicant does not agree, I'm assuming they would have the ability to appeal the staff's decision, and then it would come to the board as an appeal. But for those that are not in compliance, that's what code enforcement would have to go out and actually enforce our policy, or code as it pertains to fencing. Now, if this board wants to see every request, I certainly would advise against that, because that's what you have staff for to review. But if there is one that you all believe is questionable or is not in compliance with the code, you all just report those to code enforcement or to my office, and then we can have code enforcement go out and see if the fence is in compliance. Now, I will say, if there's already a fence that has been erected, there's nothing we can do about those unless you all put a stipulation that any fence that's not in compliance with this code becomes compliant by a certain date. But I would caution against that, because you do have a lot of individuals that have already installed fences, and that could be certainly an expense to the property owners. But once the board approves this, the effective date will be today. So anyone who has a fence up that is legal, then they are vested under that being, that fence being permissible.
So if we wanted to add that language to this particular one, can we make it where, as of today?
So by approval, unless you all give us another date, it will be effective today. So anyone who installs a fence will be required to follow all of the regulations as set forth on the overhead.
Okay. I just, I'm just trying to figure out how to allow for the district commissioners to know what fencing is going in prospective communities. So if it's going to go before the review and it's in District One, for example, could you not shoot Commissioner Wilson an email and say, hey, this is going here at this location or whatever, and this is what it is? Or no?
So let me say this, if the board approves this and puts language that the district commissioner has to be notified, then that's what we will do. But I'm going to caution against that, because when we talk about fencing, that's every type of fence. That's for a swimming pool, that's any type of fencing. And I just don't believe that you all need to spend time doing that. If we have a code and it outlines what's required, then that's our job to make sure that we're enforcing the code. If there is one that, hey, look, we've received an application, Commissioner Wilson, it's in compliance with the code, but you may get some calls and complaints about it, we can certainly reach out. But is staff electing if we're determining if it's going to be an issue or not? I just think there are a lot of fencing that goes up throughout the county. And so I don't want to commit staff, and then we miss one, and then we haven't notified the commissioners of it.
Okay.
And then that's certainly, county, I'm not the one that's reviewing it, so I'll certainly defer to Kenta and his team on if it's something that is doable. But that's just my initial thoughts on the request.
Commissioner Lewis, go ahead.
Good morning. My question is, how do citizens even know that they have to come to us to get a fence permitted?
Unfortunately, they don't, and that goes with really anything in our code, you know, accessory structures, people will put up an accessory structure without coming to staff first. And then with that, you know, we have to whole, start a whole process getting it permitted. If it doesn't meet the setback requirements, you gotta get a variance and whatnot. So I think that comment can be applied to really anything in our code, and it's difficult to provide that awareness to the public. Really.
I just have a lot of concerns, because, I'm sorry to cut you off, I just have a lot of concerns, and one of them being that if a homeowner puts up a fence, then we tell them the fence is not permitted, and then they have to go through the expense of not only putting up the fence, but then taking the fence down. Do we not notify contractors that do business in Henry County that they have to get a fence permitted? Like, there has to be some way, and my whole angle of this is protecting homeowners, that's my angle.
So I think, and I know Mr. Kirk's going to the podium, a lot of times, once the builder builds the home, the fence comes after the homeowner purchases. And so a lot of times, it's not the builder who's installing it at the time of construction. Now, if it's a contractor, we can certainly, we do have quarterly meetings with our building community to advise them of any new changes, regulations, updates to our code. And so we can certainly put something out and just say, hey, by the way, if you're going to install a fence, you need to check with Henry County, because there are some rules and regulations. But as Kenta indicated, a lot of times, we don't know until the neighbor calls in and says, hey, my neighbor's building a fence, and I'm not sure if they have a permit, and then we have to send code enforcement out. And you are correct, unfortunately, the issue becomes either they remove the fence or they come before this board and ask for some type of relief to our county code.
Okay, Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. I want to go back to the, making the commissioners aware, can, when the citizens send in a complaint, is that when we can be notified at that time?
Absolutely.
So that way, it's not saying every time a fence is going up, but when a complaint comes in from the community or constituent concerning a fence, if we can be CC, because I'm sure that you're putting things in writing and email back to the homeowner, correct?
Certainly, yes.
So if we can be CC'd on that, that makes us aware to know what's going on before it's too late.
So I have another question, and I don't know if we can do this. One, we are amending ordinance such as this, and I know that since I've been on the board, we've had a couple of situations where people had built structures and didn't get a permit, and they had to move the structure. And so is there any kind of way through either the ward authority or our tax commissioner? Because they send notices out to everybody that owns a home in the county. Is there any kind of way, maybe we could put some of these ordinances that impact homeowners to let them know, okay, this is our fence ordinance, and this is what you have to do? Or if you're building a structure, or if you're doing, you know, a lot of time, people add decks onto their houses, and they'll do different things, and, you know, to have to take it down or to relocate something can be very costly. So is there a way that maybe we can partner with the ward authority, because everybody has watered, hopefully, that's living in a dwelling, and those that are homeowners get a tax bill, because they let us know when they get that tax bill? So is there any kind of way, maybe we can put a notice with that?
Yeah, we ought to look into that. We almost see like a 1-800-D kind of advertisement, but let us look into that and see how we can accommodate that.
Yeah, before you bill, call 211.
Right.
I don't know.
So let's probably work with the tax commissioner, because I know most water bills, like my water bill, I don't get when they send me a text, and it just says, your bill is due, press yes to pay. And so I don't get the paper copy, because they're electing now to eliminate the paper. So maybe that's something we can get with the tax commissioner on. The only thing, Chair, is that tax bill goes out one time a year. And so whoever owns that property at that time is going to receive it. So if it's a new individual that's moving in, they won't receive it until the next year. So that would be the only notification hindrance. But I think we can also make sure that we put it out on all of our social media, make sure we post it at our building department. But a lot of times, people just don't know, and you're right. We see people building decks all the time. And what we do is, it's like, see something, say something. If you see it, call in and just say, hey, look, I want to make sure. And it's not to prevent people, but from a safety standpoint, we want to make sure that they're following all the building codes and requirements that are out there. But we can certainly look at any and all options to make the public aware of this.
Commissioner.
So thank you, staff, for meeting with me. I've had a lot of concerns over this, because District Three has a lot of properties that would be impacted by this. I have concerns over six-foot fences, because we have a lot of intersections in District Three that would have a fence if you did the front yard, that when you go up to the intersection, that height could intrude on what you're trying to see from the road. So I understand the fire safety concern aspect of that, but also a traffic aspect of it, of being able to appropriately see. Just some that are impacted immediately, Upchurch-Bethany-Lakedale Road, because of how there's no internal access on a lot of those roadways. So uniformity is something that's always important to me. I think maybe an appropriate solution would, one, there would be HOA approval, two, four-foot max height, 10-foot out of the right-of-way that helps preserve the sightlines, and then also not a solid structure so that folks can see through that, public, you know, fire safety and PD when they pull up. And it does need to be decorative in nature. That would be my suggestion.
And that's for the front portion?
That's for just the front portion only. And that would be, if you want me to make that, I can make that as a motion, but that would be my recommendations.
So one concern we may have with that is, if you take 10 feet from the existing right-of-way, it may end up in the middle of the yard, potentially. So that may be something we need to take a look at, so it doesn't look awkward, if that makes sense. So I'm not sure if we need to word that, but we'll have to figure something out. Okay, see you.
Sorry about that. Speaking with David Simmons with DOT, he made the recommendation of making it at least 40 feet from center line of the road. That would be assuming that the right-of-way, and obviously outside of the right-of-way, in events that it is over 40 feet, as far as the right-of-way is concerned. Staff is okay with DOT's recommendation if the board is.
One last thing. So just in case there's not an HOA available for a subdivision, we need to specify that the, I guess, the Architecture Review Committee would make the determination of the fence, the look of the fence. So you want to get HOA approval and PNC approval as well?
Yes.
So the approval needs to be in writing from the HOA?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And...
We currently do that now, like with those accessory structures and things of that nature.
So you want me to make that motion, then, based off what they said?
I guess what, so, and Commissioner, I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. This is for the front yard portion, so can the size of the fence be taller than four feet?
Absolutely. I don't worry about the side of the backyard, no concerns about that. The thing is, you have a lot of corner lots in District Three, where you've got an intersection coming this way and around schools, so that's a concern for me, because you've got high school students driving. And as you come up to intersections, that height fence is six-foot, would add additional obstruction into view line.
Right.
And I'm just trying to make sure we preserve those intersections, so you have enough, when you're pulling up, you can see.
So can you still word it that way, but still have the option for the four to, no more than six feet for other options?
Yeah, so I would recommend that if it's a rear yard fence, be a six-foot fence.
Well, sorry, to add on to that, our code for side and rear, and I think you said rear, currently allows for up to eight. For front yard fences, you know, whether it's six-foot visibility, you know, seeing through it, or four-foot solid, you know, we can have that, or just completely remove solid, that is, it's really up to the board.
Yeah, so I think the best would be to have a four-foot opaque fence, no solid fence in the front. That would be the easiest way to keep it clean.
No solid fencing.
Right.
Want me to make the motion, then?
Did you have a question?
I do.
Someone have questions?
I just want to go back to when you were saying the notification. Is it possible, because you stated that once someone moves, that they still would go through a real estate person, even if purchasing, right? So is there something we can notify real estate of the ones that are, you know, licensed to do business here in Henry County?
So it could be a real estate agent, or it could be owner, an owner sale. And so if it's an individual that's selling their home without going through a real estate agent, we wouldn't have any knowledge of that. What we can do is, again, maybe work with the tax commissioner, because every individual should be claiming some type of homestead exemption if that's their primary structure.
Right.
And so we can certainly work with them on that. What we can also do, I think we do keep a list of HOAs, maybe notify the HOAs so that they can notify the homeowners, hey, if you're in this community, please be aware of what's, what the county's rules and regulations are. But I'm sure that we can, we can come up with a way of making sure that we're getting the information out.
Okay. And this is not just for fences, but this would be for structures, decks, and anything else that requires pulling up a permit to build.
And one other thing, I think, Mr. Kirk, if you can follow up with your cluster, we have quite a few subdivisions that are under construction, maybe working with the leasing agents within those subdivisions and the superintendents that are already on site to just put maybe a, you know, here's what you need to know if you're doing business in Henry County as we're adding the new homes. And so when they're going in to look at the homes, maybe having some type of flyer that we can provide to the leasing offices to say, contact Henry County Building Department if you're looking to construct, build, add-on, or do anything. And so I think there are ways that we can get the information out.
And I have a comment and a question.
Yeah.
My big concern from day one of this is the floodgate that may open, the number of people, if this is approved, that may start requiring or wanting these front yard fences, and how that, again, aesthetically would look. And then, secondly, the question is, in this Architectural Review Committee, are there any written standards like of how certain properties would be approved, or others is not approved? And if we approve one resident and don't approve another resident, how do we make those determinations and those types of things?
Yes, so with the Architecture Review Committee, we look at DOT, you know, maintaining site distance. We look at the design, of course. We, with the building department, make sure that, you know, they're not going to require any sort of, any additional information. As far as written standards, quite frankly, no. There aren't a set list of things that we will, it's not written down as far as what we look at, but we do look at all these other aspects, you know? Is it an HOA community in instances of RA properties? Is it HOA? Do you have HOA approval? What's the design? Is it the character of the area? You backed the flipping.
So I would say is, they're not written down, but we do have, I guess internally, we have a criteria that we look at.
Yes.
We definitely don't want to have an ugly fence, if you will, but as of right now, today, if y'all did nothing, RA zoned properties can put a fence up. So what's in District Three, fence may not look like what's in District Four's fence, right?
Right.
So, because it's not one side fits all. So we have to use some judgment to say, hey, okay, this fence fits here, this fence, type of fence, fence over here. So it's still somewhat of a judgment call, but we definitely can put down, you know, parameters A, B, C, and D that we look at. But again...
Because my concern would be, you know, the whole ugly and beautiful can be subjective.
It can be.
And so what's beautiful to one may be an eyesore to another.
Right.
And I feel that there needs to be some kind of written standard. So if I'm looking at a potential request, if I had a bad day today, this may not meet my approval, but tomorrow it may, just so that we would be covered, I think there needs to be some kind of standard that is void from any personal feelings or taste, or whatever the case may be. Because I wouldn't want to be driving down a road, and you have this fence in this yard, and there's another fence in this yard, it's just everywhere. And I just feel that, you know, if it is approved, it could open up potentially the floodgates.
Yeah, so we have a few pictures of potential-looking fences, and we can make this part of our, part of the amendment, text amendment. But I do want to caution that, you know, everybody may not like the same fence, if that makes sense, all right? Can you get over here? Please, ma'am. All right. So there's a few fences that we've identified that could potentially work. You've got these opaque fences, you've got the rail fences, you've got the, some wrought iron fences as well. There, I don't think they're all going to look the same, nor do I think everybody's going to want a fence. So it's just, we're going to do our best at this to make it right, because I may not want a fence, or if I do want a fence, I don't want the rail fence, I want a different type of fence. So we got to kind of be somewhat careful with how we... So, we got to kind of be somewhat careful with how we manage that.
Yes, and I agree. I just feel like we need to have something, though, you know, if we approve or deny, to be able to justify why, and not just verbal, but something written.
Do you all go out and to the site, to the area to see?
Oftentimes, yes.
So, how do you know what fix the character of a neighborhood if you don't go out?
No, that's one of, they're going to go out. We're going to go look at the fence. Sometimes we can look at it through Google Maps.
Yes.
We can see it that way, but we do look and see what's in the area.
We also try to look at the zoning as well to see, you know, if it's all RA, you know, fences very well may look like the left side of the bottom right. So, we do use zoning as a kind of guideline as well.
Again, this is not inside of a subdivision, so we're not inside subdivisions. Well...
Currently.
Currently, we're not inside subdivisions. However, with the new text amendment, it would be part of a platted subdivision, but it doesn't gain access from an internal subdivision.
Yes, that is important.
So, you would never go, you would never go into the subdivision to see?
So, this ordinance is for fences that are outside of subdivisions or communities?
They wouldn't take access from the internal road.
Go back to your man.
Right. And most HOAs have a guideline of what the fence can be in a community anyway.
Correct.
Yep, so it would be, it would be for properties outlined in red, you know? Those are all technically within that Spidey Chase subdivision, but they're not taking access from that internal road. They're taking access straight from Jodica Road. And I think Commissioner Wilson had a comment.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson. Go ahead.
As I stated in the last meeting we had about fences, I'm not in favor of solid fences being on the front. Also, if you do put a solid fence on the front, how are we going to hold them to maintenance of defenses?
So, one thing...
Who maintains that fence and do we let code enforcement go out?
Code enforcement can deal with the maintenance of the fence.
But if everybody starts putting up these solid fences, then code enforcement is going to be busy because these solid fences create a lot of issues in beautification. After a couple of years, they start dilapidating. So, how, do we poke something into the ordinance to how you maintain them?
So...
So, that's, that's two issues I have, the solid fence and both the maintenance.
Right, so I think the motion was going to be to have an opaque fence, so there would not be a solid fence in the front.
None.
Correct.
But I think the height was going to be the issue at four. You're going to be at four.
Four feet max in the front.
Right?
Yeah.
Is that...
Yeah, I...
Commissioner Angler was talking about the height to go to.
The height, yeah.
But it only has to be with the fences that you just shown, right? The three, three fences are going to be, only thing that's going to be allowed?
No, showing you examples. Those are just examples. I mean, if you limit it to just those three type fences, that mean somebody else may want something different. They may want a plastic, those white plastic fences up front.
But should we allow, just have, should we have those fences listed in the ordinance where it's going to be a vinyl fence, go be a metal fence, or a wooden fence? And show examples instead of just give them?
So, let me make this recommendation, since there's a lot of questions.
I'm talking about on the front now, I'm not talking about on side or rear.
I'm clear, I'm clear. But let me, let us make this recommendation, because I think we, I think we sent this out to everybody to give us feedback on it. I'm not sure if everybody did or not, but let us, if you will, if you feel like it, table it, we'll bring it back and show you exactly what we plan to do, because there seems to be a lot of confusion or misunderstanding about what we're trying to accomplish. So, I would feel better in that vein. Again, it's up to you guys.
So, let me ask you, ask you this question here, because I think that what Commissioner Wilson is saying is that the ordinance will include that the front, the fencing that's facing the front has to be open.
Correct.
Correct.
So, that will be part of the ordinance. It cannot be enclosed.
So, let me ask you this. What, are we having issues with our current ordinance?
So...
We have several different requests come in for front yard fences for properties in subdivisions, which our code, for the most part, does not allow exclusion of RA subdivisions. This, of the requests that we've received, staff felt it was most comfortable allowing for a front yard fence for properties in subdivisions that do not take access on the internal street. You know, we've only really had one applicant come forth to provide that, you know, request that ULDC amendment. So, we have had a few requests, short answer, we have had a few requests. I wouldn't necessarily say there are issues, but, you know, not everyone has been happy with our fence ordinance. This is a way to allow for additional flexibility. And, and, sorry to cut you off, one other thing I wanted to add, in our reviews and approvals for front yard fence requests, it will always specify, and unfortunately I don't have the exact thing, but it will say something along the lines of must be maintained by the owner, if not, you know, could be subject to code enforcement.
So, put the pictures of the wooden fence back up that's... So, the bottom, okay. We'll take the two wooden fences. Well, that's solid, that's a... See, that appears to be solid, but it's not solid. The one on the bottom, my bottom left.
Yes, the bottom left.
Do you consider that a solid fence?
That would be a solid fence, that is just an example that we had.
Now, let's go to the ones to my right. So, how close together are those two bays going to be before you consider that a solid fence? Can you leave, can you put a six-inch board up there with a two-inch gap? Are you going to consider that a solid fence, or is that going to be a rail fence?
So, my question would be, what's your recommendation, sir?
So, we need to put in there, if you're going to put a four-foot fence, you're going to use six-inch boards. You've got to have at least eight, 10 inches in between the two boards to make it a see-through fence. But if you don't, you're going to have people to say, okay, it's not a solid fence, because I put two inches in between those, it's not a solid fence. So, they'll, they'll push it to the limit. So, if you're going to put these type fences, if you're going to put a six-inch board, you got to have double that in between them, all right? So, six inches, you got to have twelve. If you're going to do four, you got to have eight in between the spacing. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Because if we don't, they're going to put them inch apart, so it's not a solid fence.
Okay, thank you for the, that's the, we asked for our recommendations, so thank you for providing that. Like I said, at this point, based off of what we heard today, I would recommend we just table it, if you would, so we can go back and make the...
Let's do that. Let's table it to the next meeting, June 25th. Or the next morning meeting, Ju...
Let's do morning.
Let's do a morning meeting. Let's do it for the next morning meeting in July.
So, you all need to make a motion?
Please.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to table?
I'm going to motion to table.
Can I get a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay, got one motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Transportation planning. Sam?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Henry County Board of Commissioners. Henry County developed and adopted a trails plan in 2022. This trails plan came up with a countywide trail network along with a name and a logo. The trails plan then recommended that Henry County's next step be to develop something called a wayfinding plan, a document that will provide specifications for trail signs, specifications such as heights, widths, various dimensions of the signs, specifications for colors and materials. So, in September of last year, we contracted with a company called Page, and for the last 10 months, we have been busy developing such a wayfinding plan for the county. I am pleased to report to the board that we have come up with a draft Henry County Trails Wayfinding Plan, and we look forward to presenting it to you today. I have with me Ms. Fun Nguyen with Page, and she will present to you the wayfinding plan. After we present the wayfinding plan and answer any questions you may have, staff requests that you consider adopting the Henry County Trails Wayfinding Plan and thus giving this plan your stamp of approval. With that said, I will turn over to Ms. Fun Nguyen.
Thank you, Sam. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and Board Committee Members. Just a quick overview of what Sam described as our scope of work with, our goals were to create a flexible wayfinding system that could grow as the trail system evolves, inviting residents to enjoy the trails for recreation, connection, and commuting safely and easily. As just a background review of the overall trails plan, the county proposed a network of eighty-seven proposed trails, and of those eighty-seven, three segments were chosen as model miles. And those are listed here. They include the Camp Creek Model Mile, also called the Camp Creek Greenway, the Fairview Road Model Mile, also the Tawa Laga River Model Mile. Our approach for this project, in developing the wayfinding plan, was to focus primarily on what Sam described, which was to create those specifications, so the colors, fonts, font sizes, heights, weights, material callouts, in order for these trails to be constructed in the future. This process and our approach was divided into three distinct phases of work, which I'll describe, but they include a discovery and assessment stage, community engagement activities, as well as design development in presenting design concepts for the sign family. The first phase, called discovery, involved gathering and reviewing and synthesizing all the relevant guidelines and documents pertaining to the Henry County Trails. And because these trails don't exist yet, we really studied the trail plan's document, which included diagrams of each of the model mile segments outlining primary destinations and key features, community gathering spaces, connection points between neighborhoods, in order to plan different sign locations. Another part of that trails plan document was the adopted brand of Henry County Trails, so that became a really grounding element that we used when we were developing the sign concepts. Part of this process involved designing a logo, which Sam had described. We worked with the project team and developed this, this mark and brand for the Trails Wayfinding Plan. It incorporates icons representing the primary activities planned on the trails, as well as a new tagline that we developed as a team together, which is Explore Where the Signs Take You. The third part of our assessment was looking at other metro Atlanta trails and assessing of different stylistic and brand options, how these signs were organized, the density of these signs, and different key features, which we summarized for the project team for a collective review. Those included trail systems like the PATH Foundation, the Atlanta Belt Line Trail, the Shambly Rail Trail, so both small and very large systems. Phase two of our exploration involved community engagement, and Page led two in-person pop-up events, which included the Southern Crescent Cycling Group's end-of-year party at the Story on the Square in downtown McDonough. Also, we, we had a booth at the Christmas in the Grove in downtown Locust Grove on December ninth. And then, the third aspect of our engagement was a online survey, which ran concurrently with these pop-up events, and that ran from December through January. Some of the tools we used in these engagement events included idea boards, where we could have interaction with community members describing how they plan to use the trails, what they'd like to see, what kind of information they'd like to see, what activities they would like to participate in on the trails, as well as some educational information that provided background on those model mile segments. We had great participation, and we've summarized a few of the demographic data that we captured to see the broad public input that we got across the county. That's in the appendix at the end of the presentation. But also, we gave a fuller assessment and community summary that was presented to the project team for additional detail. Some of our key findings with the community input and the project team's input included creating a system that was flexible and adaptable and had some longevity, stylistically, that it felt welcoming, encouraged engagement, and was recognizable. We also were given direction to use the adopted Henry County Trails branding logo with the city identifier to include in the sign design and add brand recognition and consistency across the sign family. And then, the color palette for the wayfinding signage should complement the existing trails logo, which would feature shades of orange, dark red, and dark brown that drew inspiration from the architecture of Henry County. So, we took all of this information and we started to develop sign concepts. The additional input that we received from our community engagement were the key types of information desired to be viewed on the signs, included mile markers, distances to different destinations, maps, and trail etiquette. So, that really informs, from a sign design perspective, how we organize the information and how we create a hierarchy of where that information occurs. The public also thought signage every half-mile felt like the appropriate amount to identify major destinations. And then, the primary planned use for the trails included recreation and exploring nature. And of those recreation activities, the most preferred were walking, cycling, running, playing, skating, and other in that order as far as desired activities or planned activities. So, as we moved into the third phase of our approach, which was the design of the signage and wayfinding system, we really grounded all of these design concepts in the notion of the earthy colors of Georgia and being really grounded in, in Georgia red clay. So, that became the foundation for all four concepts. We presented four different schemes for the project team's review. Our aspirations across all these different schemes was to create something that was modern, bright, colorful, and expressive, very identifiable for Henry County. And then, we balanced that with practical considerations for flexibility, durability, ease of maintenance, and budgetary concerns as well. So, I'm going to run through each of these schemes that were evaluated. The first scheme, we called Grounded in Georgia, and it was primarily monotone and really focused on those Henry County Trail colors. So, it was keeping with the brand colors, had, was framed in a painted aluminum frame with some tonal insets for information like the maps, trail markers, and mile markers. This we called, this scheme we called Grounded in Georgia. For Scheme Two, we offered two different color variations, but this, the focus of this design was very minimal and vertical in nature, like tree trunks. It incorporated natural wood-like material and had changeable panels with green accents to really highlight those mile marker information. This is the second color variation of Scheme Two, with the white serving as the sign panel for the information. Our third scheme, we called Blue Skies. So, we're incorporating a new accent color along with those orange and dark red grounding colors. And in this scheme, we also looked at the simplest sign form, so we wanted to offer an economic, or the most economic of the different sign forms, which was a simple post and panel system across these different... and panel system across these different sign types. And then our fourth scheme, we called Sunshine, incorporating that bright yellow color in addition to the, the orange and the dark red, which are more minimized in this sign concept. These sign, these panels were incorporated on a perforated panel that had an abstracted pattern representing a waterway or river reminiscent of the wetlands or rivers that are present in Henry County. We reviewed all of these schemes with the design team, and the selected option was Option Two, which was the modern and natural sign form. For a couple different reasons that the project team favored this option, the natural elements and the vertical nature felt like a very complementary footprint for exploring nature trails. And then there was the very recognizable colors for Henry County's trail system, and that the accent color of green highlighting the mile marker, which the public really wanted as their primary information, was really set off the most in this design scheme. Our next steps after the design concept was chosen was to develop guidelines for placement of these different signs. So that's what you're seeing on the left is a sign location plan of the three model mile segments, identifying where certain sign types should be located, as well as developing guidelines for how these could be extended once the trails grow across the system. And then we're also concurrently working on sign details for fabrication. That includes all of the dimensions, material callouts, and really specifications on type, size, and placement, as well as where to incorporate things like rules and etiquette for trail use. Here is a snapshot of the schedule and where we are. We started, as Sam said, in October, and we've now in mid-June with this, this meeting and presentation to the Board of Commissioners. Our remaining tasks will include incorporating all these details into the Trails Plan, Wayfinding Plan, if, if, and once approved. And this is a cover image of the draft of the Trails Plan that was sent along, showing the favored design concept in, in context on a trail. You can see how the, the wood elements really blend with the trees, but the information panel really reflects the Henry County brand. If you'd like to, we can go to the appendix, which shows some of the demographic information, but we are hoping today to seek your approval on the development of the draft plan and design.
Okay. So I've got a couple of questions. I see that we have Jim here from the Atlanta Regional Commission. So in our plan, so are we in collaboration with the cities? I know that the cities also have their own trails plan as well. And so how, how are we connecting with them to, as we build this out?
The four cities and Henry County jointly developed and adopted the Trails Plan back in 2022. For this wayfinding plan, we invited all four municipalities to join us on multiple occasions by staff, U-Chair, and County Manager. Out of the four municipalities, the City of Locust Grove chose to partner with us, and we will also be representing this wayfinding plan to the Locust Grove City Council. So the opportunity was given, and at the end, Henry County and Locust Grove have partnered together in developing this wayfinding plan. How we incorporate the municipalities, the Henry Trails logo will have the city's name when a trail segment passes through a municipality. That's how we incorporate every municipality.
Okay. So how, and, and I know this has nothing to do with this, but since I have Jim here, I want to talk about the Flint River Trail that is coming down through the airport, Clayton County, up to Lovejoy, I believe is the destination. And so they just got $50 million for that Flint River Trails Plan, and I'm trying to figure out how do we connect to that and we get some money. So Jim, you're going to have to help me with that at the ARC. How are we going to incorporate that? So I just wanted to put that out there since I had Jim.
No pressure.
Well, just to add to that, Chair, we are pursuing a federal grant to design a trail for Camp Creek Greenway in McDonough and central Henry County. This trail sometime in the future will be part of a long trail on the south side of Atlanta, from Flint River up to Henry County. So it's a small step towards a long-term vision of a long trail on the south side that will allow people to go from one county to another and connect counties and neighborhoods.
And, and I know that I have been to some, in conversations with Spalding and FED as well, with regards to some of the things that they're doing over there. And so it would just be great to have the south side of, you know, on, on the Southern Crescent portion to be, to have that connectivity with, with trails. I think it creates an opportunity for different types of mobility and healthy living and all of those different things. So I'm really excited about what you guys are doing and look forward to us, for us to continue to expand and see how we can connect with our neighbors.
And I'll give you a plug that there is a SPOS referendum coming up this November. It's an opportunity to place some trail projects and realize our future trail vision.
Absolutely. Are there any comments or questions from any of the Commissioners? Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Price.
So you're saying Locust Grove was the only city that partnered with us? Or are we saying that as we're building the trails out, that they won't be connected to the other cities, even the ones that did not agree to partner? Or how does that work?
It's just regarding this wayfinding plan document. The City of Locust Grove chose to partner. The other three cities did not join. But there are many trail projects on the T-Splus project list. There is right now the draft SPOS Six project list, there's trail project, and we will, we'll be constructing trails. As far as signs, we have proposed a sign that incorporates or recognizes the municipalities by adding the name of the municipality. So yes, we are working with the municipalities, and we welcome them to join us. But at the end, the choice remains with the municipality, whether or not they partner with us in a particular project like this wayfinding plan.
Is it too late for them to partner now?
Yeah, we need to, because we're going to have to take a vote today on this. But this is not about necessarily the, the trails are connected, connected to Stockbridge and the other communities. This is about signs.
Just signs.
Right. Okay, so we passed a T-Splus that has the trail connectivity, but we've got to move forward with our signage and, you know, if the city, other cities decide that at some point they want to adopt this, then they can, you know, they can decide to do that maybe at a later time.
Ideally, we would like to have these signs all over Henry County, so that we have one uniform signs. And citizens don't care whether a trail is in Henry County or in McDonough or Locust Grove, they just want to enjoy trails. And it would be great to have one uniform signs that identifies as Henry County Trail Network.
Okay. One last question, though, just from my own knowledge. So they didn't agree to partner, so would there be an issue with the installation, do you think, of us putting the signs up even though they didn't agree?
We're not putting them on their trails. This is our trails.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you for this, this is very nice. But at the top, is there possibility we can do a light, like a little, like, you know, could some be out there late, you know, riding their bikes or whatever? At the top of it, is there something for the aesthetics to be able to shine down on the wording that you have on there? Or is that additional, a whole lot of cost in that?
Of course, it's an additional cost, but it is something that we can entertain. I don't know whether the, the Belt Line Trail signs have any lights. I think I saw some had, had lights.
And part of that is involved with when the trails actually get designed themselves, and they'll include a lighting plan. And with that lighting plan, we can, we can include some uplights with the signage. And then we can also specify reflective material and paints.
Okay.
So that there's better, better visibility.
Okay.
For the information.
That would be great.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Sam.
Awesome. Okay. Any other questions from the Board? If not, could I get a motion?
Yes, you did, brief.
Got, got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam. Can I get a motion to approve our May 7th, 2024 minutes?
Move to approve the May.
Second.
Okay, got it. A motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, our upcoming meeting is June 25th. It'll be the fourth Tuesday of the month, at 6:30 is our regular scheduled Board meeting. July 9th at 9:00 AM is our next Board meeting. There are no other questions or consult, County Manager?
Please be on the lookout, we do have a joint meeting with the cities for SPOS. We are looking to confirm the time, but the date is June 27th. We will make sure that we get an email out to the Board. We've kind of gone back and forth with the cities on setting that meeting up, because the original date was at a time that they were going to be at their municipal conference. And so the 27th has been the identified date, but we are trying to confirm the time. So I just wanted you all to plug that in, because we were trying to make it work on a day that we had a regularly scheduled meeting, but that did not work. And so as soon as I get the time, I'll forward it to the County Clerk, so that she can make sure it's posted. But that is a joint meeting between the Board, the Chair, the Mayors, and the Council for all four cities to discuss an IGA for the SPOS Six referendum.
Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.